This conference will now be recorded.
Darn it. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council. Regular meeting for the City of Warrenville for Monday, March 6th, 2023. Conducted in the traditional in-person format here at City Hall. For convenience, the public may view the meeting virtually using go-to information, access information this found on our website. Please note that public comment will only be available in persons during the meeting. Remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. Those viewing the meeting remotely will not be able to provide public comment via the remote meeting access. So may I have roll call, please?
Alderman Ashower.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Christel.
Here.
Alderman Crockenberg.
Here.
Alderman Lockett.
Here.
And Alderman Widener.
Here.
Thank you, Julie. Please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have a presentation this evening from our Police Department on the FY 2024 Budget. This is part of our normal process for our budget, and we welcome Chief Sam Bonilla tonight to make that presentation. Chief, good evening.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. I'm grateful to be here tonight for my first presentation of the budget. Very excited for the opportunity, and I look forward to this evening. See how it goes tonight. Being that I'm new to the Police Department, it took me a little while to get acclimated to what went on during fiscal year of 2023. Had to sit down with a lot of people to kind of get a lot of foundation, a lot of backstory to what went on prior to my arrival. I think I got a pretty good grasp of it. I think we have a pretty good foundation at the Police Department, and I think everybody was very well informed in filling me in on things that happened prior to my arrival. Apparently, we had a lot of challenges in fiscal year 2023. However, without those challenges, we wouldn't have any valued accomplishments. So I'm going to go through that this evening and share with all of you some of those challenges and accomplishments that we've had to overcome. And also talk about some of the things that we look forward to doing in creating a better Police Department for the City of Warrenville. First of all, with our personnel updates, we've had a lot of changes. We've hired a new police chief, myself. And it's been quite a ride so far. I'm very excited again for this opportunity to be here. We have a good foundation in our Police Department. We have a lot of good men and women who serve the City of Warrenville very well and very faithfully. And I look forward to working with them and making this a much better Police Department than what we already have. Seems like a tall task considering we already have a good Police Department, but I'm up for the challenge. We also had three officers that we hired this year. We had Officers Tofano and Cologne Alatriste, who are now on their own off FTO. So they're flying solo. They're on their own, patrolling the streets, and we think they have really excelled in their field training program. Did hire one CSO last year, but as the adage goes, two steps forward, three steps back, we lost a chief. Chief Ray Toronto retired. We lost a detective to retirement, Detective Adam Cat. We had two full-time police officers resign, one of which was the new police officer that we had just hired, who resigned prior to completing their field training program. The same CSO that we also hired this same fiscal year, we lost only four months later due to a resignation. And we lost crossing guards at the end of the last school year, and we lost our emergency management coordinator. So to say the least, we are fighting through. We've lost a lot of personnel. We have a lot of vacancies, but we're really trying to fill the gaps. Due to some of these vacancies, we've had to kind of reorganize our organization a little bit. Our problem-oriented policing unit, which is our TAC unit, have been moved into patrol functions to fill those shortages. We've had to take our traffic unit, move them into patrol to fill those shortages. Our investigations unit is also running a little bit short. So we're trying to do our best with the minimal manpower that we have currently. We also had an officer that was recently on FMLA, which is medical leave, which we're expecting back soon. And unfortunately, we lost our last remaining candidate that was on our eligibility list. So we do need some personnel. So what are we doing about that? Well, we just recently had a new exam this past month. We had 43 applications. We had 31 of those applicants showed up for the orientation, and 28 of those passed the initial testing. So they're moving on to the next phase, which is the background and all of those things that they need to be hired. We are probably looking at about three spots to start at the Police Academy, May 1st, which is at the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy. By then, those three officers, we should have our officers that are back from medical leave, and we should start seeing a change in our personnel back to normal operations. This past fiscal year, we've also negotiated two contracts. We had the Sergeant's contract, which was in April of 2022, and our new, and the Officer's contract, which was August of 2022. Both of those are set to be renegotiated. The Sergeant's, April 2025, and the Officer's are April 2024. So we got those out of the way. We don't have to deal with those for a little bit, fortunately. All right, so some of the exciting things with the community. We've had a lot of community interaction. Now, these are really good accomplishments because this is coming, now keep this in mind, this is coming out of our long hibernation period, where everybody was isolated, everybody was masked up. So now we're starting to trickle back into the community and get involved in some of our community events. Wrong click. We've had a document shredding event and electronic recycling, which saw 6,920 gallons of documents shredded. We had a half of a truckload of electronics recycled. See, that's pretty successful. That is really, that's really good for us to get involved in. For everybody's information, this year's event will be Saturday, May 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Bauer Elementary School parking lot. So we look forward to even better turnout this year of recycling. Our prescription drug recycling program took in 547 pounds of old medications which were destroyed. That's a lot of medications that we've taken in. We have the program, which is the "We Live Alone" or "I Live Alone" program. We had 349 calls made to the public. Now, for information, that is to notify our folks that are home alone, that may be elderly and don't have people that are nearby to take care of them. So we had 349 calls made, and we had 49 volunteer participants, in that program to make sure that our community stays safe out there. We had two officers that participated in the St. Irene Trunk or Treat event. So that's pretty good moving forward. We had some educational opportunities also, which I found out this was a big educational opportunity, which was our annual fireworks detail in Warrenville. We had 96 hours of dedicated police service to education and enforcement within the community. That led to 20-gallon garbage. We filled a 20-gallon garbage can with destroyed fireworks that were destroyed, delivered and destroyed by the DuPage County Sheriff's Office. We had 28 calls for service and issued 14 tickets during that event. Again, very successful, and we plan on continuing that for this year. Our National Night Out Against Crimes in the community, we had 55 vendors, 1,000 people attended. We had food trucks that were utilized for the first time due to the difficulty of finding reliable sponsor volunteers, and because of that event, we actually got an award that we received from the National Night Out Organization, which we presented before the council. We had the Bauer Walk and Bike to School, which is typically a pretty good participation. The mayor participates in that, and the police unit members participate in that. So we look forward to continuing these as we move forward. We've had some charitable contributions. Now, I take this personally because I will be involved in this this year personally. We had the Illinois Law Enforcement Torch Run for the Special Olympics. We had the Polar Plunge and the Cop Rooftop, which raised a total of $7,330. We'll be doing the Polar Plunge again on March 11th, and I will be jumping in the pool this year. So I welcome anybody to come out and participate and/or just watch for the fun of it. We'll be out here in the City Hall parking lot, and it'll be a joint effort by the Police Department and the Fire Department. So again, we're looking for a really good turnout for that event. Our officers attended the Illinois Police Officer Memorial in Springfield. We had two sergeants and five officers that volunteered their time to go down there to represent the City of Warrenville. This is an opportunity to pay tribute to fallen Illinois officers and their families down in Springfield. We had a shop with the cop this year, which is around Christmas time for children in need. We had officers who participated with one child with shop with the cop. We took donations, and we allowed that child to collect some of the things that they wished for, some of the things that they needed, and the officer walked with them. Again, we're looking for a bigger turnout this year. That's what we're hoping for as, again, we start moving forward into the new fiscal year. We also had the U.S. Marine Corps Toys for Tots, which we hauled in 18 bags, big bags, of donated items of toys for children. It was a huge success, and we had to back up the truck and load it up with a bunch of toys to get delivered, which was really nice. It was really good for the community to get involved in that as well. So now we're looking at a proactive approach. We want to stay proactive in the community. We want to make sure that we're staying on top of things, staying on top of our responsibilities to the community and the residents in town. So once we start digging in and getting it done, that includes installing flock license plate recognition readers. There were some delays in getting these installed within the community. Two of the nine cameras have been installed. One of it is installed at Winfield and Butterfield. The other one is at Winfield and I-88. Those were just installed on Friday. Now, we had a problem with one of them, so now I think they have to get a permit. They ran into some wires that they didn't anticipate, so we're going to have to get a modification to one of the permits to reinstall that. So we have one active camera working, one not working, and then we have another seven that are still waiting to be installed. We have the Axon Interview Room cameras, which we had put out. What we wanted to do was purchase the equipment first, so we have it, so we could beat the prices. We presented that before the council, which was approved. And now we're just waiting installation after the new fiscal year for all those cameras. We have them at a good discount. Now we're just waiting to get them installed. Our Axon Fleet cameras, which is our in-squad cameras. Now, we got three cameras, and the first two in-car cameras were installed in November. So what they are is they sync up with the officer's body cameras, so you have the view in the car and the officer. You have two different views. You also have a wide-angle lens and a more focused lens in there, all recording at the same time simultaneously. So you have a bunch of different views. We're trying to phase out, this is a seven-year phase-out period, where we're trying to work in new cameras as the old ones become obsolete. And again, these work in tandem with our body worn cameras. So that's a good thing for our transparency, so that way we can see exactly what's going on with our officers in the community. Currently, we are having some carpets replaced within the Police Department. I am currently a victim of this replacement, as I have been displaced from my office for a while, which is fine. I can hole up anywhere and do my work. That's not a problem. But they are renovating the carpets and replacing them. They was somewhat old, so we had to get them replaced. The expected completion date is the end of March. Again, they're working on the administrative offices this week. And we only suffered one week of the lobby closure, which I want to thank the city staff for allowing our people to come over and use the office while we had the lobby closed, and we had to transition the residents over here if there was any police business that they had to take care of. So it was good cooperation between the two, and we really appreciated it. We had an audit in our evidence room this year, this past fiscal year. This is an annual audit to make sure that everything is on the up and up in our evidence room, and make sure our records are maintained properly, make sure all of our evidence is maintained properly for our criminal cases. And we found no discrepancies during the audit. So we were very successful that. This includes 100% of the guns, drugs, and money and random evidence that we've taken in. So we were very successful with that as well. Lastly, with this is the expungements. So we had new cannabis laws that were issued, and we had a certain timeline that we had to get all of these old records expunged for previous cannabis arrests. We are now completed at this time, and we've successfully expunged all of the old records that we do not need anymore due to the changing laws. So now, in the same vein of staying proactive, we had some active shooter training with the Warrenville Public Library, who were very appreciative for the officers who went over there and kind of did a presentation for them, for them to see like what to do during an active shooter situation. Preparedness is very important, and that's one way that we should be staying proactive in the community is with the training. This was conducted in November, and it consisted of presentation and some role-playing scenarios to get them acclimated. We also did our annual active shooter mandatory lockdowns in all the schools to satisfy those requirements. We did some in-house Police Department defensive tactics, firearms, and active shooter training for our own officers to make sure that we stay on top of our own training. And we did some scenario-based training within the Police Department and the City Hall building. We also had some NIBRAS training. It's N-I-B-R-S. It's the National Incident-Based Reporting System through the FBI. This is conducted during our roll calls, and it was really regarding crime data collection within our community to report nationally some of the things that are going on in our community. So we got training on that. Lastly, for this, we received Lexipol Connect Silver Award, which is an agency excellence in policy maintenance and training. Last year, it was bronze. This year, we moved up to silver for maintaining all of our policies within our Police Department and making sure that our police officers are properly trained on those policies. With public safety and integrity, we had our first hybrid squads placed into service in June. We've been very happy with those squads. We've not had many complaints. The only complaint is that they're extremely quiet, and some of the officers can't tell whether they're even on or not while they're driving them. If that's the worst complaint that they've had, we'll take them. Otherwise, they've been operating fine within our fleet. We've had four solar-powered speed signs installed, and I know that the mayor touched on this during his address. There were westbound Motavia at Shaw, westbound Mack in Essex, continental west of Johnson Elementary School, and eastbound Warrenville near Mignan. So those are all installed, maintaining people's speed limits there, and just for educational purpose, for people to see when they're speeding, because sometimes you may not realize how fast you're going until you see those flashing lights at you, and you take your foot off, and you kind of wake up a little bit. We've been involved with Merit, which is the Metropolitan Emergency Response and Investigations Team. Being involved with that, we responded, last fiscal year, we responded to 19 other agency assists, providing 28 personnel toward incidents responses in and around DuPage County. That included seven crisis negotiation call-outs, one forensic investigation call-out, three major crimes unit call-outs, two public integrity unit call-outs, and 15 SWAT call-outs for fiscal year. In return, unfortunately, we were the recipient of that aid with two Warrenville activations. We had one homicide and one barricaded subject. Our police bike unit received three new bicycles for a bike unit, so that way they can get out this spring and summer and start patrolling on the bikes, on the bike paths and some of the other trails. We joined Ring's Neighbors Public Service Safety, which is based off the Ring app. So we're a part of that, where we put messages out to the community. We also allow the community to send us messages through that app. They can upload videos if they see suspicious activity or criminal activity for the police to view or to share with their community for things like be on the lookout for a certain subject or vehicle. Again, this is a great way to stay connected with our community. It allows people to share information, which is very important. It allows people to share information with the police, and in reverse, we've been sharing information with our community to make sure they stay informed as well. We've also been involved in DuPage County Peer Support Team presentations. Now, I'm going to touch on this a little bit later, but this training occurred during roll call, and it is development towards an in-house officer wellness program. Again, I'm going to be touching on that, but that is more for our own officers to maintain their wellness and mental fitness while they're serving as our police officers. Obviously, a lot of our officers see a lot of things that they may be troubled by, and this gives them an opportunity to reach out to their peers for support. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about moving forward. And I'm going to talk about our decision package, and then I'm going to talk about some of our goals for our new fiscal year. So the first thing is our decision package. And we are looking forward to possibly getting a utility task vehicle. Now, the importance of this, I'll go over in a minute. But what this is, is a Polaris Ranger 1000. Okay, the cost is about $34,000, include complete. We can go a little bit cheaper if we sacrifice some of our options. But here's the point with this. This can go into areas that our squad cars can't get to. Now, what we see here in Warrenville is that we are surrounded by trails, paths, and many forest preserves. Forest Preserve Police are not always on 24/7, but we are. If we get an emergency situation in some of these trails and some of these areas where our squad can't get to, we're either left to walking on foot or riding a bicycle. Now, you could argue that, okay, fine, at least we could get somebody there. But what if we have to get equipment to them, like medical equipment? Or what if we have to get them out of there in a rush? We can't put them on a bicycle, and we certainly can't carry them out, depending on where they're at. So after thorough research and sitting down with some of our staff, we thought that this would be a great idea for search and rescue operations. This has been very important, and we reached out to some of the other communities that have these, and they've been a great asset to their Police Department. Again, especially with the surrounding areas that we have around Warrenville and all the trails and paths that we're looking to put in. This is something that can carry officers, equipment, and patients if we have to. This is also very important for community events. This is something that we can bring out, that people can actually touch, feel, get involved in, walk around. We saw in some of the other communities that this was very good in their National Night Out. They use it in their summer days. They've used it for all different community events where they use this type of vehicle. Now, it's not used all the time, so it has a longevity of lasting many, many, many years. Okay? It is gas-operated, but the gas is very minor. Max speed is only about 35 miles per hour, and we could limit that to make sure we can increase that, or we could lower it based on our needs in our community, so we don't just waste gas. Again, this is not something that we're utilizing on a daily basis to just patrol around like our squad cars. Those ultimately end up having a limited life on those because of their use and the hours that they're running and the hours that they're left on. These, this particular vehicle would not be used for that. This would be used for emergency purposes, which I feel that we may need, and for community events. So we would not be using it, the depreciation on it would not be as significant as you would see in a regular squad car. It is a piece of side equipment. It is auxiliary equipment, but it's something that I feel that we need within our community because of our surrounding areas and our open areas. Now, some of the goals for 2023 that I'd like to talk about is we're going to be conducting our Sergeant's Promotional Exam this year. Our list is expiring. We have an assessment center coming out. So we're going to be taking, we're going to be doing our Sergeant's exams this year to start getting some new supervisors. We're hoping to fill all of our staffing vacancies with our new list from our from our new hires, from our new candidates that we've just tested. We are trying to implement an officer lateral transfer program. We feel that Warrenville is a great place to come to, coming from a lateral person, from another community. I could vouch for that, saying that this is a great community to work for and a great Police Department to work for. In speaking to some of the officers at the new hires, they told them that, you know, it's not always important the benefits that you get, but look at the culture of your Police Department that you're in. It's how you're treated. It's how you're respected. It's how you're trained. If you don't get the support from your staff at your current Police Department, you could come to Warrenville, and you will get that. So we're going to be implementing our lateral officer transfer program. We're going to be negotiating our collective bargaining agreement. We're also going to be mandating as part of the Safety Act, our Officer Wellness Check. Now, this is part of what I talked about a little bit earlier. These are going to be annual mandates on the police officers to go have a session with a licensed therapist, to sit down with them, to talk with them. It is mandated for each and every one of our officers to go and do just for their mental wellness. Now, this is not a fit-for-duty check. This is just a mental wellness check, and all the officers are going to be sent randomly, just going. They could sit there and not say a word, or they could sit there and talk all they want. It's their hour to do what they want. I've gone to this myself, and I felt that it has been very valuable as far as kind of getting a grasp on things and putting everything into perspective that a lot of the officers see throughout their career. So I feel like this is a good thing that we're doing out of the Safety Act, and this is something that we're going to have to do for our officers, and we're looking forward to that. Again, even some of the officers who sit there with their arms folded, thinking, "I'm not going to say anything to anybody. I have nothing to say." Those are the ones who ultimately end up talking the most. So I think this is going to be a good thing for our officers. We want to participate in DUME, which is the DuPage Metropolitan Enforcement Group. It's basically a drug task force within the area. Now, we're not going to have an officer there, but what we want to do is we want to start getting involved with them and partner with them, so that if we do run into a problem in Warrenville, we can call them, and they could be an additional resource for us in investigating some of these things. They have additional man- They have additional manpower that they can use undercover, and they could make drug buys, do undercover surveillance, things like that, to kind of assist us in doing what we need to do as an additional resource for us. We'd like to put into service four squads. Now, we have them on order. They're supposed to be coming in, but due to the supply chain, we're a little bit delayed on that. We're not sure when we're going to get in. At least our orders weren't canceled, like some other municipalities, but they told us they're going to be significantly delayed in getting those, and we have no new date for that. We're going to complete our installation of our Flock cameras, our license plate recognition cameras. We still have seven more to go after the two that are already installed, and we're hoping to work with community development to get, implement our rental regulation and inspection program up and running for the community. In protecting the community, what we're going to do is we're going to sit down and we're going to review our ten shared principles of policing that were incorporated within the city. I want to make sure that all of my officers are familiar with those. We're going to be posting them around the police department, so that way they become part of our culture. I want everybody to be familiar with them, so that way they understand exactly what we kind of swore to do within the community. So we're going to get more involved with that. We're going to be reestablishing our emergency management program, so that way we could set up drills for the community, for the city staff, to make sure that they're well-prepared for emergencies. We're going to continue protecting life and getting involved in DuPage Merit Program. And we'd also like to establish what's called Code Red, which is a company that, it's a software product, that what happens is it allows for emergency calls to go out. We could type it in, we could text it, and an automated phone call will go out to the community. So if we have a missing person in the area, if we have an emergency in the area, it's just another way to reach out to the community and share information. Now, I know that we're already on social media. I understand that we're also involved with Ring, but not everybody has social media and not everybody has Ring. Certainly, maybe even some of our older community who've not really gotten involved with it, they at least have a telephone where they can get messages, automated messages, saying we have a severe weather warning, we have an emergency in the area, stay inside, or we have a missing child or a missing elderly person in the area, be on the lookout for certain things. So it's just another way for us to reach out to the community in an event of an emergency. And then, serving our community, we want to continue participating in community events. I'm very proactive in that approach. I'm very big on getting involved in the community, getting involved with the city, to make sure that we have a good collaborative effort to make our community feel safe just by, with our presence. So I want to make sure that all of the officers are getting more involved in community events and making an appearance, smiling, shaking hands, and just getting involved in being there. Again, we want to continue our participation with the city events and city planning for good collaboration within the community, and we want to have positive interactions with the public. That's what we're looking for, to have positive interactions. We'd also like to get involved in some of our old programs that we've kind of gotten away from, for example, like Citizens Police Academy. That's something that I would certainly love to get started again within our police department. I myself would take an active role in teaching some of those classes as well, because I believe in it so much. I've seen it working in my former community very well, and it brings a lot of people. You're inviting people into your home to see how you are, to see how you operate, to see that you're not just a robot marching around in a uniform and in a squad car, that we're human beings also. And they get to know us, and they get to understand how the City of Warrenville Police Department works and operates internally. Okay, I will open up for questions and take a quick break from talking on and on.
Well, thank you, Chief. Obviously, a lot transpired this past year, and we have a lot to look forward to in terms of improvements. And anybody who thinks that police work is not sophisticated should just listen to what we went through now, to see all the things that you're involved in and all the things that you're planning. So, good work. One comment I would make is the Citizens Police Academy. I participated at that twice in the past. It was phenomenal. I hope we can get that up and going again. It really is a good way for people to understand behind the scenes what goes on in police work. It is a very, very interesting and difficult job, so let's hope we can get that going.
We will, we will, and it's very important to get that out to the community and get some involvement, and I hope we do get a lot of involvement.
Good. Any questions for the chief? Goodman?
Thank you so much for that thorough presentation, Chief. Couple of questions from me. On the search and rescue vehicle?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you reached out to the forest preserve, or do you plan to, about its use on paths and trails that they own? Most of the types of locations that you're talking about would be on their property, and they might have some opinions about what vehicles are appropriate for trail use.
Sure, we would absolutely reach out to them to find out what some of their restrictions would be. My only point in bringing up the forest preserve is that if we didn't have time to wait for them to come out, that we would need something to get in there and act if they needed some, if somebody needed some assistance. But we would definitely make sure that we knew all of their regulations and policies regarding what vehicles can go onto what property.
Okay, I mean, I'm sure, you know, if people's lives are at stake, they're not going to necessarily worry about trail damage, but if you're buying it specifically for that purpose, then we should try and do something that isn't going to, you know, tear up the trail too much.
Sure, absolutely.
Right, okay. I know that you're talking about a vehicle that wouldn't necessarily get a lot of regular use, and so hopefully would have a longer lifespan, but I wonder if other vehicles, you know, might be used by overlapping taxing districts that could be shared with them if they're not using it very much. I was thinking the Park District, I know, has a golf cart that they drive around during city festivals and things like that, that I don't think that they use on like a daily basis. It's possible that there might be some opportunity for sharing ownership of the vehicle with another taxing district that could have use for it some of the time, and maybe that's something that we could explore to try and cut down on costs.
We could look into that. The only problem with that is where the vehicle would be at any given time. If we shared it with another district and the vehicle was stored near there, we would have a hard time like getting there and getting it, rather than having it available for us if and when we would need it.
Sure, I mean, the Park District is across the street from the police department.
I'm sorry?
The Park District is across the street from the police department.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I see what you're saying, right. Yeah, we could look into something like that.
It's just an idea. I'm just saying, these are maybe creative solutions for something that, you know, might be a little outside the box.
Sure, sure. I guess there were some things that I would want to consider, but first of all, is that it is a police vehicle. So if there was anybody who is non-police getting in that, I'd be, I'd have some concern with that. That's the only thing that I would feel about that.
Okay.
It's like almost like sharing one of our squad cars with somebody who would need to jump in there. I don't know if I would feel comfortable with that as well, you know? So, but I hear what you're saying, and that's something that we certainly can explore and circle back around to.
Maybe, maybe. The city has shared vehicles with the fire department in the past, for example, but I think that was a Public Works vehicle.
Sure.
All right. My last question has to do with the Citizens Police Academy. What kind of resources or contributions would we need to give you to help you make that a possibility? Because I think that there is interest in the community in a Citizens Police Academy, and I know that with staffing shortages, that might not be something that the police department can go ahead with even if everybody involved wants to. So what could we as a council do to support that idea?
There's, the thing with Citizens Police Academy is that is a very low-budget item. It is not really anything that we couldn't do even with minimal manpower. It's really the time commitment and the advertisement that we would need to get the word out there, to get people involved and encourage people. You know, I would expect the council members to maybe get their constituents involved and excited about something like that, again, to learn their police department and learn the officers that are working in their community. I think that is very important. Other than that, there really wouldn't be a lot of, we would just want the support, maybe even a couple of council members participating.
Okay, all right, so public outreach to get you volunteers, once you have a program that we can sell, sell, sell to the community.
Absolutely, for sure.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Alderman Laggett?
Thank you for the presentation, Chief, and thanks for jumping. I cannot wait to see that video if I cannot make it in person.
The video?
Are you going to dress up like anything? I think there was mermaids there last year. Can we get you to put on a costume, maybe?
No, I don't, I don't know about that.
My question is, the Code Red that you spoke about?
Yes.
It seems like such a great idea off the top of my head, it being the tornadoes, it just came, tornado warning, I shouldn't say.
Sure.
But I think a lot of people were the same way. It happened on a Monday, real close to 10 o'clock, and people thought it was a Tuesday, because we were just used to it, you know? And I think if we had something like that in place that went off, and would that go off to anybody that's, and again, if you're, if you don't know, but would it go off to anybody that's registered as a resident of Warrenville or only within this area?
So what Code Red is on source is what they do is they provide an initial database of phone numbers. They also have phone numbers that they get from any kind of billing within the community or anything like that. So they already come with the database. Then they, we would put that out to the community and say, anybody else can register. This is a new program that we have. You can either update your phone number if it is an old number. Many people don't even have house phones anymore, so they can update it with their cell number, or they can register for that, so that way they can get alerts. I have something that I get through the College of DuPage, where something very similar, where anytime they have an emergency alert, mostly it's weather for them. I get an automatic phone call on my cellphone or text message, and it says, you know, severe storm coming, the school is closed, or stay in your residence, so. And in my previous community, we've used that as well. There's some other capabilities, too, internally. You could call back officers on that, you know, on an emergency situation. So it does have some other value where you can, where you can utilize it. So it's not just for the community, but yeah, they would just register and then they would get the phone call.
Yeah, because I think it would help, because if you weren't here in the area, and let's say you're a parent who works in a town forty-five minutes away, you have no idea necessarily what's happening.
Sure, right.
You know, so I think something like that to alert them, you know, would be awesome. Have you looked at cost on any of that, or?
It's not, it's a subscription-based, and there's different packages that are involved in that. So depending on which one would suit us best, I think, you know, they have a spectrum of different things that they offer. The great thing is that we can do it remotely, too. We don't even have to be sitting in the office to do it. You could do it from being on the street or being somewhere else. And then if you hear of something going on, I could literally send a text, log in there, send a text, and it'll send out a phone, a phone call to everybody, so.
All right, well, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Alderman Davlos?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I thought I knew a whole lot about what was going on at the police department, but thank you for being so thorough, because I actually learned four or five things I didn't know. So I appreciate you taking the time. It was a wonderful, wonderful presentation. Also, these ten shared principles that are on the last page, thank you for including those. I remember when we passed them, and I thought they were wonderful, and I just think the more we get them out there and let people know sort of what the bedrock philosophy is, is wonderful. So thank you for including those.
That is our plan.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief, thanks so much. Great presentation. I look forward to the next year. A lot of good things coming down the pike. Thank you.
Me, too. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Great. Okay, the next part of our program is set aside for citizens' comments. We have a couple folks who signed up this evening. We'll start with Julie Brockman. Welcome, Julie.
Thanks, Mayor and City Council, for having me.
A little closer to the mic, Julie, please.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having me. My name is Julie Brockman. As you may or may not know, I've owned and operated Touched by Jewels, a well-known massage therapy business here in town for the last eighteen years, where I've treated countless Warrenville residents and non-residents alike with many medical conditions, and helped them manage their health and continue their wellness journey over many years. My small businesses helped other businesses in town thrive by bringing clients to our city for shopping, dining, and other activities before and after seeing me. I want that stimulus to continue for this great city, but there are two sizable obstacles that stand in the way. The first obstacle is Warrenville's position on whether or not to allow licensed massage therapists to own and operate their legitimate businesses in town. So far, the City of Warrenville has enacted ordinances that have forced out legitimate current and legitimate practitioners like myself, and prevent new legitimate massage therapists like Teo Price from opening their doors to the residents of Warrenville and giving them their health and wellness and healing benefits that these highly-trained and licensed massage therapists offer every day. Clearly, this is the result of the tragedy of human trafficking, and it takes place all over the world, and it's found its way here. Fortunately, our police department has done their job to correct the situation, and rightfully, the city wants to ensure that it stays out. As legitimate massage therapists, Teo and I want nothing more than to help the criminals, help keep the criminals out and the good people in. But we submit that limiting the number of therapists and raising the cost inordinately is not the answer. The reasons, according to Title III, Chapter 2-6, Paragraph B, the number of massage establishment business licenses specifically limited to four. In the event that one of the licenses provided, four shall lapse, be revoked, or terminated in any manner, the City Council may reduce the maximum number of such licenses. And the second obstacle is Paragraph C, which outlines the fees for opening and maintaining a state-licensed massage therapy business at an initial cost of $1,000 plus $100 per year renewal fee and annual fingerprinting. When compared to other general licensing requirements, which state that the initial cost to open a business license is $35, and annual renewal costs are only $10, it seems, however, that the City of Warrenville requirements for massage therapists regrettably fall under the easy-way-out standard in addressing the scourge of human trafficking. If we get rid of all the massage therapists, then there's nothing to worry about, yes? Far from it. However, how would these restrictions impact massage therapists? Massage therapists in general only make between $30,000 and $40,000 a year. So $1,000 to get a business license is a lot of money, especially even before the therapist has a chance to start. I would hate to see Teo, I would hate to see Teo start her business in another town, especially since staying in Warrenville would also benefit the chiropractic office she wants to work out of. When used together in massage therapy, chiropractic care form a highly effective treatment for the body. In fact, some chiropractors also offer massage therapy as an excellent way to optimize one's health by offering treatments that can alleviate pain, reduce stress, and boost the immune system. A more reasonable and productive way of handling this matter would be to alter the wording in Paragraph B to state that the City Council may reduce or increase the maximum number of licenses. An example in point, I'm here today with Teo Price, who along with her family have been lifelong residents of Warrenville and a part of the Warrenville community. Now she faces an uphill battle when she has every opportunity to be as successful as I have been over the past eighteen years. I want her not only to serve the people of Warrenville, but to also bring people from other communities, that is not only to keep her business growing, but keep other businesses in town growing as well. We are asking you to resist the easy way out and take a page from Lake County's book to treat each application on a case-by-case business to include the following: a rewording of Paragraph B as described above, full background checks for applicants, an interview with the City Council for an approval, and building inspections. We are also asking for consideration to the fees being reduced to $250 for the initial fee, which is fourteen times higher than the $35 more so other businesses pay, and a $50 renewal fee, which is 20% higher. fee, which is 20% higher than others, but would be acceptable for us knowing that it's helping Warrenville fight human trafficking and demonstrating the city's commitment to support its small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. We'll certainly take your suggestions into consideration.
Thank you.
Bob Seabird Albright Court. There's an old saying, "Be very careful if you write something because someone just might read it." Example, City Council's summary, February 21st, Page 7, Item N. "The workgroup recommendation also includes abating the property taxes annually and repaying the debt with TIF 4 revenue. For this to be a valid statement, you would need the financial information that I requested at the public hearing in December 2022. At that meeting, the public hearing, as you know, I was told that I would receive the requested financial data. However, that has not occurred. So at this time, I can only conclude that the requested financial data does not support your statement, or I would have received that information."
Thank you, Bob. Official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor, several things this evening. First of all, a reminder that the budget workshop is coming up on Saturday, March 18th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. here in the City Council chambers. Breakfast will be available for those who attend, and of course, the idea is to discuss the FY 2024 proposed budget. So again, put that into your calendars, please. This is also Women's History Month, which is a big deal, I think. In March, we celebrate Women's History Month to recognize the contributions and achievements women have made over the course of American history in a variety of fields. You could certainly find out more about this if you'd like to by going to womenshistorymonth.gov backslash or forward slash. Certainly, if you go on the internet, there are a lot of opportunities. The City's Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission, IDEC, welcomes feedback, ideas, and suggestions to further the mission of inclusivity and respect for all in Warrenville. Submit comments to idec@warrenville-il.us. They're always welcome. And community survey begins in March. This is really, really important for our community to find out what people are thinking and what their expectations are. We'll be taking a survey of evidence. If you receive a postcard or a paper survey, please complete the survey and return it to the city. When the survey is open to all residents, please consider completing the survey and sending in your responses. Very important to make it worthwhile to do this. Your responses are a very valuable part of the city planning process in identifying important issues, guiding the budget process, and setting goals for the city's strategic plan, which will be revisited before too long. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk, do you have anything? Nothing to add. Okay. And Alderman? Okay. City Administrator?
Nothing this evening.
All right, thank you. And City Attorney?
I think.
Well, we're off to the agenda for this evening, then. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening? Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the March 6, 2023 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second, Alderman Lockett. Any discussion, changes? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented. We have one set of minutes that also need approval this evening. Alderman Widener?
Yes, motion to approve the minutes of the February 21st, 2023 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second by, I think, just an instant quicker. Alderman Davlos gets this one. All right. Any discussion of those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries, and the minutes are approved as presented. The consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, Wave 2nd Reading and Pass Ordinance 02023-04, Approving a Temporary Use Permit for the Warrenville Park District Special Events in the years 2023, 2024, and 2025. B, Offer First Meeting of Ordinance 02023-05, Providing for the Issuance of Not to Exceed $10,700,000 General Obligation Bonds, Series 2023, of the City of Warrenville, DuPage County, Illinois, for the purpose of financing capital improvements in and for the city, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and of interest on said bonds, and authorize the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. C, Receive and File Minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Meeting Held on January 12, 2023. D, Receive and File Report of Invoices Paid Up to March 1, 2023, in the amount of $60,930.90. And E, Authorize Expenditures for Invoices Due on or Before March 20, 2023, in the amount Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second again by Alderman Lockett. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Alderman Davlos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Krakenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved as presented. We have nothing under a regular agenda for this evening. No unfinished business that's listed, no new business listed, but we do, however, need for a closed session. May I have the citation, please, and the motion? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120/2, Pren C, Pren S1, "The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity."
Second, Alderman Goodman. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davlos?
Aye.
Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
And Alderman Krakenberg?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We're now entering into closed session. We will not be conducting any business at the conclusion of our executive session, so you're free to go about your personal business. Thank you again for your attendance and attention this evening.